Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 8th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to the roll call members. I know we're all, we're kind of spitting around the chambers here a little bit, but Tony, we'll call the roll, please.
Yes, Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wee.
He's absent.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
And our new member, Morris Jones, is not with us yet tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or edits to the minutes?
I wish to be added to the minutes. I was present, but I wasn't put down on the minutes at the top.
Okay, we have.
Okay.
Are there any other edits? Okay, we entertain a motion to edit the minutes to reflect John's changes. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes after the edit has been made.
Okay, motion is our second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. All right, first up tonight, a couple of years ago, the City of Lebanon partnered with the Lebanon School Corporation to implement or help expand the School Resource Officer Program. So, we wanted to, after discussions with council, we've had it mentioned before, you guys wanted to hear some feedback of how that program was going. So, we're lucky to have tonight Dr. John Millman, the superintendent, and we also have Chief Smith with us as well with the, with the School Resource Officers for the Lebanon Schools. So, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Millman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for allowing us opportunity to come before you this evening and share some positive impacts that our student resource officers have on our Lebanon community schools on a daily basis and also on the entire community at large. As a school district, we're expected to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff, and frankly, we should be held to that standard and that responsibility. So, our administration and SROs work side by side to meet this expectation, but also an expectation of creating positive relationships with our students. SROs have shown through research to be a proactive investment a community can make to address not only school safety, but as part of an overall community policing strategy. When students are comfortable in relationships with law enforcement, they're less likely to become offenders and more likely to trust and report incidences of law enforcement. The issues our SROs address daily then is one of less, of local law enforcement needs to make to address on that day and may actually prevent some future events from happening. Quality school police department requires adequate staffing, equipment, and training. Threats to our students don't always come through the door as an armed intruder. We hear that a lot, and of course, that is a major component of keeping our students safe and be able to react if one of those unforeseen things may happen in our schools. Threats can come through electronic means, through the internet, targeted advertising, if you've been following the vaping and e-cigarettes epidemic that we've been battling in this country with our adolescents and unfortunately, our elementary students. Our SROs are dealing with those issues on a daily basis, counseling, teaching, providing that positive reinforcement for our students. So, we're very proud of that. Actually, prior to Mayor Gentry and I talking about presenting this information to the, to the board this evening, the council this evening, we had already been working on a video to highlight our school police and our school resource officers as a featured video in promoting our, our school district. So, we're going to play this like a four-minute little video that I, and the students and the staff can do a heck of a lot better job than I can about talking about the impact. And then, we have Chief Smith with us this evening, and he has some data that I think you'll find very, very interesting and very powerful about the daily impact that they have on our students. So, we're going to shoot that video up real quick.
An SRO's presence is, is outstanding as to having this building, walking hallways, walking around in the cafeteria during lunchtime, just knowing that we do have an officer in the building, the students knowing that we have an officer in the building, somebody that you can go to and communicate information to if necessary. That, that's been a great addition to each of our schools here in our corporation.
This has been a blessing, and it worked out great as far as, you know, my family life and everything. And it took a little adjusting because, you know, I was an old snarly street cop, came in here with all these kids, and they just melted me here like a snowman in the summer. I'm known as Grandpa around here, and a lot of kids call me that, and that, that tells me that I'm accepted.
I was really honored because whenever he came in my classroom and like my teacher was looking at the classroom, I was just, I just started raising my hand as high as I could. I was super excited.
They're not just police officers, they're mentors, and the students love them. They are here to be a positive impact on their lives, on the staff. You know, they don't only support the students, they support the staff, they support the families, they support the community, and the relationships they build and to watch them build are fun. It's fun to see, and, you know, again, it gives the parents just that one extra level of security to know that I'm sending my student off to school to learn, and that's all they have to worry about is learning.
They see me in the hallway, they see me in the mornings out front, you know, when they come to school, and we do the high fives and all that, and they, they know I'm here, and it gives them a sense of comfort and security. And the staff is the same way, you know, I just volunteered to do hours during special events where it's just teachers in here working with the parents that come in, and it gives the teachers a sense of comfort to know that there's somebody here in case something bad should happen.
I think they actually do feel very safe because some of the teachers are parents also, and with them knowing that their kid is perfectly safe with Officer Learning and Junior SROs, I think that just makes them even more glad and happy.
School safety contains a wide range of issues, concerns, of possibilities that could happen. The training to learning the new ideas, new knowledge, new methods, new procedures, and so forth. We're not just going to take something and implement it here, but there could be one or two things from a webinar or from a conference that we go to or a phone call that we had with another school that clicks with us and says, yeah, I think that would, might be a, a good thing to communicate here with our school safety team, and we might look at adding it to our plan.
Thanks to Mayor Gentry, his staff, and the local government, we wouldn't be able to do this without their support and their funding. They want a safe community, they want safe schools, they want safe families, safe students. So, thanks to them, they support us in having that and providing that extra layer of security.
I would want mom and dad to know that the children are cared for here and that they're protected here. I would do everything in my power to protect them against bad outside elements, and I take it very seriously, and I want these kids to go home to their mom and dads.
We care, we really care. We love them, we want what's best for them, and working together and having this relationship with our SROs, with the community, with the families is going to make it stronger and send out a stronger message. And again, we couldn't do any of this without the mayor and his support and the local government behind us. You know, it just shows that when you have those working relationships, your community's going to be stronger.
I'll turn it over to Chief Smith, and he's going to walk you through some of the data. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you talk about our SRO program. An SRO program definitely is a component of community policing. We are a preventive type agency where the investment that we put into the schools hopefully will pay us dividends at the other end, keep these young people from getting themselves in trouble, making, and have them make the proper decision so they end up being productive, which helps us all. I have some stats, I have some numbers. They don't mean a whole lot to a lot of people. To me, as the administrator, they're important, so I know that the officers are doing their job, but I'm just going to go over a few of these real quick and talk about them, kind of explain a little bit about what we do. The SRO program is a triad theory type program where we are law enforcement officers, we are informal teachers and counselors, and we'll kind of touch on all those as I, as I rifle through these real quick. As far as, you know, a law enforcement officer, we're doing, constantly doing building checks, doing campus checks, we're making sure the doors are locked, making sure the proper people are signed in, signed out, making sure the park, the parking lots are safe and clear, just everything we can do to keep the building safe, got a safe building, we've got a building that's going to enable learning going on inside. Again, LHS patrol, LMS patrol, we have all our patrols in the elementary schools. Basically, what that means is we're just being seen out in the hallways. We're, we're making sure that, like I said, the doors are locked, they don't have a rock propped in there, leaving the doors open. We've got to make sure that the playground areas are clear, there's no wild animals or whatever the case may be outside as well. I'm going to go, oops. Traffic hazard, our schools, several of them are neighborhood schools, and you know as well as I do, and the neighborhoods know as well as I do, come arrival dismissal, some of our elementary, I think it's quite active. And our SROs have spent a lot of time standing out in front of that school, watching that, trying to come up with better ways to unload the kids safely, either by car or through the buses, and then also to get them out of the building without disrupting the neighborhoods as, as, as much as we can, trying to keep that to a minimum. So, the traffic hazard part on that probably is maybe a stalled car, car that didn't go through the cones the proper way. Our SROs are trying to redirect those so we keep the kids safe and get people in and out of there. You know, four minutes of a traffic jam at an elementary neighborhood school seems like 50 minutes to an hour to the residents there. So, we do everything in our power, and the SROs have done a great job of redirecting that. We have seven and a half SROs, as I like to call it. Our half SRO is a part-time officer that is assigned to truancy, and he'll follow and track kids that have missed an excessive amount of school, basically missing. And there has been a time or two where he's had to report one of them missing because we weren't able to track them down. But we have six buildings, so it takes seven and a half of us to make sure that we have the six buildings covered. I as administrator, but I also fill in for schools if sick day or an officer has to go to court or something has come up to where they can't come to work or step in there and cover their building. Our truancy officer also does a great job of stepping into the schools when he can to fill in for vacancies and things. There are probably a few minutes that there's not been someone in that building, but very few. I would say 95 to 99% of the time, there's an SRO in that building without fail. And I remember back a couple of years ago when this started with Councilman Campbell brought up a concern about the after-school events were just as important to have coverage, and that has kind of taken care of itself. These officers have become very passionate about what they do, and when there's a, you know, food pantry or there's a parent night or there's something going on at these schools, I will sit down and try to come up with a schedule and assign people and know, that's my school, you stay out of it, I got it covered. They all work those extra hours and make sure they take care of it. So, it's really involved on their own that these extracurricular events are getting taken care of. Assist other agency, we work very well, and we very much appreciate the assistance we get from the, the city police department. Not only do they help us get training, they've offered, and we've gotten some vehicles from it at the start, the doors open for us, we need to use the firing range, we need to have someone do EVAC training for us or whatever, they've been more than willing to do that. And to kind of reciprocate that, we also have been able to help them. Something is close to the school or one of us that's not assigned to that school can help the city police on something they may be responding to. And then, there's been several incidences where it involves both. It may be somewhat a school issue and it's somewhat a Lebanon law enforcement issue. We work well together to make sure we come up with, with a solution to that. So, I'd like to think that mutual aid is, is very reciprocal. As far as an informal teacher, we get involved in intervention, and we get involved a lot in interaction. Our main goal as, you know, a couple of years when it was brought up, is to create positive relationships with the students, the young people in the building, and we go out of our way to do that. We also have to get involved with intervention and redirection, as I call it. We have nothing to do with school discipline, we don't set school discipline, we don't necessarily enforce school discipline. You know, we there to assist the building, administrators, building principals in, in handling that out, we help investigate it sometimes, but we do everything we can not cite a student, not to make an arrest. Arrest numbers, I don't have that exactly with me, but they're real low. I know several years ago, it wouldn't be uncommon to make 70 to 80 arrests in the school, and that's, we're not even close to half that, and most of those are vaping things, infractions in, in the restroom and whatnot. But we did talk about redirection, we talked about dissonance. That is one thing that some people have a misconception, that we do not get involved with school discipline, that's a school matter, and there is a difference between a law enforcement matter and a school matter. We are there to assist, but that is pretty much what we do. Investigation, we do, this number's real low and maybe not really meaningful as it stands. We investigate 24/7 within that building. We're walking the hallway, we're investigating, we're looking at the doors, we're looking at the windows, we're looking at traffic patterns, we're looking at the kids' behavior. We're always looking into what's going on, aware of our surroundings, and making sure everything is as safe as possible. We de-escalate, we, we offer resources, we do everything that we can in our power to make sure that that building is safe. So, constantly, constantly aware, constantly investigating things. Every now and then, something will cross that threshold from school world into something that could be construed as law enforcement, whether it's a theft or battery or intimidation, sexting, whatever the case may be. Again, everything on our part, last thing we want to do is make an arrest or make a citation, and we have to, we're fully empowered to do that. But there are so many other alternatives with JDAI through the courts, we have diversion programs through the prosecutor's office. Again, there are several steps we take long before we end up having to make a citation. So, we do a lot of follow-up investigation, which is our form of a case report, but many times, we either work it out through mediation or our informal counseling that we do in talking about changing behaviors. Bullying, we get involved in that somewhat, and I say somewhat because bullying in and of itself is not a crime. It does cross that threshold from time to time, whether it was battery or intimidation or something like that, but bullying by our school policy is responsibility of the principals to investigate that. We avail ourselves to assist them in any way, shape, or form, but it's usually handled in the schools. We talk about being the informal teacher. A lot of wellness checks, a lot of oversight that we get involved in, student contact, nine thousand, that's probably, that's probably a little bit low number, that's, that's our business. That is the main thing we do, is make positive relationships with kids, and that's just not saying hi to a student at the beginning of the day. That's the contact that we make, asking them, how was your day? How'd you do in the ballgame last night? Did you have a good time at your concert? Where you going on vacation? You like football? You sit down and try to make a conversation with these students, again, to create a relationship. During the time when students are, you know, turned off to the educational world in the building, their lunches and recess, that's a great time for us to sit down and talk about pretty much anything other than school at the time, likes, dislikes. Again, we're trying to make those creative, positive relationships, not only to help the student, but in the long term, it helps the school. Parent contacts, we have several of those, we'd like more. I wouldn't mind having a program where we sit down, have a cup of coffee with them and let them know what we do, and I'd like to get their perspective on what the expectations of us are. Parents are greatly important to us to be able to help their student, to help understand their students' world, and the more we can understand, then the more we can offer resources and help. Something we love to do as well, our informal teacher, is getting in the classroom. We're not licensed teachers, but we're able to join in some conversations and teaching in the class and give our thoughts from a law enforcement perspective, whether it be Fourth Amendment search and seizure to sexting, to distracted driving, drunk driving, teen dating violence, bullying, stranger danger with the younger-aged kids. We love getting in the classroom. Again, that is an excellent way for us to build positive relationships. The SRO program is definitely a proactive investment, as Dr. Millman has already mentioned. We invest in the kids when they're young, it's going to pay us all dividends when they become productive adults. And your proactive investment in us, a couple of years ago, greatly enables this to happen. When the county, all the county schools made a commitment to put a police officer, not just a police officer, but an SRO in every school building in the county, it was huge for the City of Lebanon to step up and do what you did because the, the help, the funding has created it to where we were able to put an officer in every building as well. And in closing, I just want to say, actually, it was the City of Lebanon that started this whole SRO thing about 20-some years ago, and back then, it was one officer doing what, what they could, and, and now, now they've got it, and there's one in every school building in Boone County, and to that and to you, I thank you for your, your investment in the future of our kids.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Any questions for Chief Smith or Dr. Millman?
Just a comment that, you know, the relationship building that you're doing is critical, especially when you watch stuff on TV going on now with the interaction between the police and the public. So, you know, get them started when they're in third and fourth grade, like in policemen, that's a good thing.
Appreciate that. It's been a strange year or two with the pandemic and, and everything else that's going on, the kids didn't get their graduation, so it's been trying, but, you know, we're all together, in this together, as they all say, and again, I just want to say I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting. I know we all appreciate the update as well, so. Okay, we'll move on to old business now. First item up here is Resolution 2020-04, which is a resolution of the common council, the City of Lebanon, for an additional appropriation. Kevin, do you want to introduce this, and I'll have Rob read it after you explain what this is for?
Absolutely. This is old business because you actually acted or, or reached consensus on the matter back in February, and this actually goes back a little further to late last year, you voted to partially fund a traffic impact study as well as a traffic impact fee ordinance. So, you originally provided an appropriation late last year that began the data collection phase of that project, excuse me, not late last year, it actually was, was last, about this time last year, you originally appropriated the funds because we began collecting data as soon as the kids went back to school in the fall. We collected data all the way up until Thanksgiving break, and then we finished up data collection. In the spring of this year, we were able to collect all the data, of course, thankfully, before the COVID crisis and that ends up throwing off traffic data. So, we have all that data collected. We came back to you in February to have a conversation about funding the remainder of the study. The total study was for $294,500. We funded $104,000 for the data collection, and so what's left to do is to fund the remaining $190,500 that will take us all the way through all the data analysis and the prep, and the preparation of a, of an ordinance that will establish the fees. So, that's what this resolution is about. Again, you, you did take action to consider this measure in February, but at the time, because it was an additional appropriation, further action was delayed until we got out of the first quarter, when the state will start considering and receiving additional appropriation requests, and then, of course, we were delayed a little bit getting back in front of you because of the current COVID crisis. But here we are today, asking you to support Resolution 2020-04 that would fund the remainder of the traffic impact fee study and ordinance preparation, and this, this resolution is for $190,500.
With that, any questions for Kevin at the moment? Rob, will you read the Resolution 2020-04, please?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Resolution 2020-04 is for an additional appropriation. It has been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Resolution 2020-04 is to appropriate funds for a traffic impact study, as Kevin indicated, and the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of Fund 101 for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same, and again, that's for $190,500, and this resolution shall be of full force effect immediately upon its adoption.
Any further questions, discussion, how the resolution has been read on first reading?
Yeah, just one, just for the public that's watching, that this money will be, we will recap that, we will recapture that money once the impact fees start coming in from developers.
Yes, yeah, very, very good, and in fact, to just talk briefly, you know, a traffic impact fee ordinance is an ordinance that is set up by state legislator that allows cities to recoup money that are due to the effects of development and the burdens that that puts on our traffic infrastructure system. One of those things that we can recoup is the cost of generating the study and generating the ordinance. So, the full $290,000, $290,500 can be reimbursed to the city with the first impact fees that we collect. Keep in mind, we have to prepare this ordinance, we have to have a committee set up and appointed by the mayor that will work on this ordinance, again, in partnership with the development community. I would anticipate that ordinance would probably be in place by next spring, and then we have to wait six months before we can begin, begin collecting fees. But as we do collect fees, based on new development and the burdens it puts on the traffic infrastructure, those fees can first and foremost pay back the money that we spent on the study, and then those fees will again be, begin to accumulate so that we can make improvements to our traffic infrastructure system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments from council? Okay, this is initial appropriation, so it does require a public hearing, so this time I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2020-04. Are there, is there any public comment? Seeing no sudden movements, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance, or on Resolution 2020-04. Any further discussion from council?
I think we approve Resolution 2020-04.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-04, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. That concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council? Okay, on to new business then. First up is Ordinance 2020-05. This is a draft ordinance for parking restrictions and This is a draft ordinance for parking restrictions, and this is Kevin Krulik as well.
Thank you, once again. This really started with some complaints that we received through our code enforcement department, also in cooperation with our police department, about complaints of people blocking sidewalks, parking on sidewalks in the Hoosier Estates neighborhood on the northwest, northwest quadrant of the city. The streets in there are varying width, but they're essentially less than 30 feet in width from back of curb to back of curb. And there are currently no parking restrictions in that neighborhood. So, what it does, it creates a situation where people try to park on the street, on both sides of the street, makes it very, very narrow for two cars to pass. Or people to try to allow for room for cars to pass will park up on the sidewalks, and we don't want that either. So, with this, this came about because of enforcement actions that were requested, and because there is no parking ordinance associated with those streets in that neighborhood, there were not, we didn't have the ability to write citations on any kind of a no parking ordinance. So, this is similar to other no parking ordinances that you've considered in the past. This is done to modify Chapter 77, Schedule 1 of our Code of Ordinances, that lists out where no parking areas are within the city. So, I've got a map here to kind of run you through this. But essentially, there are 11 street segments that we're referring to with this ordinance. There you can see the, you can see the neighborhood. Again, Hoosier Estates to orient you. This is the wastewater treatment plant down here in the southeast quadrant there of the map. This road here is Lafayette Avenue. This road is Sam Ralston Road. And you can see just the corner of the, just off the map here, excuse me, you can see the corner of the Menard site down here. So, this is the neighborhood that we're talking about. This would affect every street in the area, in the neighborhood, excuse me. Essentially, there's really kind of a main thoroughfare through the neighborhood, and that is Caraway Street and Campbell Street, that allows traffic to cut through the neighborhood and funnels traffic from the areas of the neighborhood to the main arterial streets. So, on Campbell and Caraway, in those sections where I've outlined and read both sides of the street, we would make that no parking either side. On the other streets, we would just like to restrict parking to one side of the street only. So, again, there are 11 segments here that describe that neighborhood, but essentially, this is what we're talking about, no parking on the segment from Sam Ralston through on Caraway to Campbell, out to Lafayette Avenue. And then the other streets in the neighborhood will be restricted to parking on one side of the street only. If this ordinance were to pass, we would instruct the street department to install proper signage, and then this would allow our police officers to write, write code violations on this ordinance, and begin, begin more active policing of this neighborhood.
So, Kevin, do you think this was just an oversight when they constructed the neighborhood? Or are there other neighborhoods that don't have any traffic schedules? I mean, how did this come about where a whole neighborhood doesn't have any?
I think it's, I think it's probably been a little bit of an oversight, but also just a factor of how things have changed, how neighborhoods evolve. As people have expanded their homes in this neighborhood, they maybe have taken up some of the parking that was provided in driveways. And people are parking on the street, because there's not room to park in their driveway. Or you get households that have expanded, more people living in those units than, and more drivers in those units, and again, not able to park all those cars off the street. So, it puts them into a situation where we just have more cars in, on the street than there were in the past.
Kevin, was, in the very beginning, how much time it went by before the streets were private, and then before the city took them over? That was, when it really built, I would imagine that those streets were part of the project, the guys who owned it, that started it?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I don't have a good answer for you. I do know what you're talking about, that at one point, these streets were all built as private. And I do have documentation on that, I just don't have it fresh in my mind.
Well, I was just thinking, that's probably the reason why it never got an ordinance, was it wasn't a city street when they were first opened up.
Exactly. And they do have an off-street parking lot, like a central parking lot, in the facility that is available for, for the residents to use as well. I should also point out that we, we've talked with and worked with the management company. They fully support or proposing here. So, this is not going to be a surprise to the people that manage the overall neighborhood either.
I want the people to live on Campbell Street, where they all are going to park.
Again, they would have to either park in their driveways, or they would have to park in the central parking area.
Then I guess what happens when they have guests?
Well, they'd have to park around the block, or, or again, I would say, go to that central parking lot, which is, from my, just quick investigation, looking through historic aerials, driving through the neighborhood, we've been doing a lot of resurfacing of the streets in, in Hoosier Estates. There's almost, there's very few cars that I've ever witnessed parked in there. So, I think there is ample parking, that people will just have to do that. Of course, that's a minor inconvenience, that you're going to have to walk. You know, the whole neighborhood is less than a half mile long, so we're not talking about a large walk, but there, there would have to be some, some parking in a central location and walking in the, in the event that you're having a, you know, a party at your house or something like that.
That's what I'm saying, that way, and we got that in lots of places in this city.
Yes, we do.
I mean, we got people on sidewalks everywhere, not just there. And we don't seem to do anything with them.
Well, we've started doing something, Keith. I mean, it's a matter of making sure that our code enforcement officer finds them there, but, you know, right now, there's no ordinance at all, so.
Well, I understand that.
And I should note that our code enforcement officer can't write tickets, can't write parking violations. Those are traffic violations, they can only be written by a member of the police force.
That I understand, but at the same time, if you lived on that street, I mean, there's no place else that I know of, that both sides of the streets are blocked off. I don't know one off the top of my head. Does anybody else know one?
Noble Street?
On both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Patterson?
They can park on one side on Noble Street.
They can?
No, it's, that's the other one, yeah.
Hey, right, no, I was thinking of Roy.
I mean, to Keith's point, I mean, this is, this is an ordinance, this is first reading. This is something that came out of the request of code enforcement and our police department. But again, it's first reading. I'm here to take comments and make revisions if we need to, and bring this back to you for, for second reading and ultimately a vote. This is what we've presented as of right now.
I think if people have a party in this, for four hours, you've got extra cars there. I mean, you know, that stuff, that stuff happens, but it's, if you've got three people and five cars, it corrects that problem.
I'd have to ask the chief, I hate to get the chief up there, but how many, how many tickets do your officers write a day, a month, a week, a year, on parking on the sidewalk?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, I have to do some looking. I can have it by the next meeting.
And if we're writing, and if we're writing a traffic violation like that, where, where does it go from that point? Do we, we don't have a court system, and are we, where's it going? Is it going to county court, or is it supposed to go there? Or where, where's it supposed to go?
Go ahead, Rob. If you want.
Hey, Dick, I can tell you from personal experience, I live on Grant Street, that if one of my kids' friends parks on the sidewalk, which they do, pull the tires up there, the policeman might just come up, knock on the door and say, hey, you can't park on the sidewalk. So, he moved the car. I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah, no.
Or they're playing tennis down there on the Grant Street. They do it all the time. Well, they just say, you know, you got to move it off the sidewalk.
Well, I can take you down South Meridian Street down there, where they're parked on a sidewalk down there, and there's grass and everything else down there, where they're not supposed to park, so.
Councilman Robinson, if I may, we have been looking at revamping the Lebanon City Code as it relates to enforcement of the parking ordinances. And speaking with the mayor and the clerk treasurer, we have a pretty significant lift that we've undertaken, looking at various municipalities, such as the city of Bloomington, as well as the city of Indianapolis and some of the surrounding. And we're going to be prepared to make a presentation. But essentially, it's, it would be an administrative function, in all likelihood, you know, working through the clerk treasurer's office, to allow basically administrative process for someone to come in and appeal it. And that's been, what's been raised right now, ever since the city got rid of the city court, it's somewhat been in flux. It's probably the best, best way to put it. I don't know if you want to.
Sure.
So, we're, I, my, I got a comment, because I used to live in that area years ago. And after so many years of being, being in the neighborhood, I've seen a lot of cars parked on a lot of sidewalks. And, you know, I think, I think the first time I was a councilman, that was one of the things I kind of, because we talked about parking on sidewalks years ago. And that was one of my pet peeves, was kind of like, well, even to my family, don't park on the sidewalk. Park on the curb, but don't park on the sidewalk, you know? There's a lot of residents, especially in the, I'll say, the old neighborhood of Hoosier Estates, and that's everything north of Caraway. And everything north of Caraway is the old neighborhood. And they, there's mobile homes stacked in there, all the time. Actually, more than really should be in that addition. And I honestly don't believe that we could make parking on one side of the street honestly work, because there's just, there's just too many trailers in that neighborhood to make it work. And in the new section of Hoosier Estates, which I call South of Caraway, it's really not that bad. But I'm telling, I know, I know north of Caraway, especially in the, in the old inner circle area there, where the, where there's a lot of homes there together, it's really tough. But I, I, I won't support the ordinance, because I just know it's not going to work. And we don't, we don't have a real way to, to, I just don't see adding another ordinance that we can't, we're not going to enforce. I just, I don't see it. Enforcing against is going to be a big, it just won't happen, so I don't see putting another ordinance out there myself.
Any further comment?
My opinion.
Further comment from council? Any public comment? Okay, Rob, can you read Ordinance 2020-05 on first reading?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Ordinance 2020-05 concerns an amendment to Chapter 77, the parking, parking schedules. Indiana Code allows the city, within reasonable exercise of its police power, it may by ordinance regulate vehicular parking. And that's all contained, as Kevin indicated, in Chapter 77. This ordinance, as of the effective date, Schedule I of the City Code ordinance in Chapter 77, would be amended and added those 11 separate streets, as Kevin indicated. And those essentially consist of letters D, D, D through N, 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 and they cover all the streets in the addition. I don't know that I need to go through them, as Kevin already went through it, but it's, any remaining portions of Chapter 77 are not affected by this ordinance and shall remain in full force effect. And if there was anything inconsistent with this ordinance, it would be repealed.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2020-05 is read on first reading. We will take that up at our next meeting. All right, next item I had on new business was a food and beverage fund request from John Messenger, representing the Fourth of July Executive Committee.
Yes, good morning.
Concerning fireworks.
Yes. Good evening, all, John Messenger. And tonight, I'm representing the Executive Committee of the Fourth, or Executive Fourth July Committee. Members are Carol Cunningham, Steve Day, myself, and Debbie Ottinger. And that makes up the Executive Committee for the Fourth of July. We made a real difficult decision last Friday to not have any of the parade, any of the events. Very difficult, but after talking to a bunch of health officials on the daily, elected officials, public safety, about everybody and their brother that we could talk to, we spoke with, we had to make the decision. I think when the fair canceled their event, the Indiana State Fair, I think that was ours, too. But the health officials really leaned against it. There again, we're bringing eight to 10,000 people into our, our community, and they were very concerned about others not having parades and what it would bring in. There again, so we had to make the difficult decision. The carnival also will not be here. That's our biggest fundraiser with the Fourth of July, that helps fund our fireworks. We spent anywhere from 16,000 to 18,000, $20,000 on our fireworks. I think in the most recent past years, we've spent anywhere from 16,000 to $18,000 on the fireworks. There again, those fireworks lasted about 22 minutes, 22 to 27 minutes. We did put them all together one time, and not wait until one popped before we shot one. We put them all together, and I think it lasted seven minutes. We'll never do that again, I can promise you that. Some people really liked it, but the ones that didn't with the children, where they got them in the cars, and, yeah, had to wrestle them, and eight minutes, it's over. And I think it took them longer to get the kids in the car and get there than it did. So, anyway, what I'm asking for, and I'm sorry for the late call, I, I know what protocol is, and I do apologize for that. We're kind of in a bind, asking for monies. What I would like to request is at least $5,000. If you want to go more, that would be great, to help us out with the fireworks. The banks that we have are going to help out, they're going to give their full contribution that kind of help us out with sponsoring the parade and all the events. That's North Salem Bank, State Bank of Liston, Home National Bank, and the Farmers Bank. There is an actual commitment, but pretty close to, they're going to give half of their monies that they do every year to help not only the whole parade, but also the fireworks and all the events that we have. So, they help us to fund those. And our music, our entertainment that we have, that's quite a bit of money, too, which we aren't having any of it. The carnival gives us a percentage at the Executive Committee that normally helps fund it, a percentage of the gate at the carnival. So, that's where we got our monies in the past. I'm asking you guys if you would help us out with 5,000. We'll go ahead and advertise also the food and beverage, however you'd like us to put that out there, along with those banks, because they need to be included, too, since they are helping fund it.
Yeah, and I know this was kind of a, maybe a surprise addition to the agenda for everybody, but, you know, based on just the unique circumstances that we're facing this year, you know, I think it's probably first, I mean, probably the first time ever we've not had a Fourth of July parade?
I'm a very traditional guy. It was very difficult for me not to have people at my house.
Yeah, you're probably the local historian, right on that, so.
I'm telling you, I, I, very difficult. This is all hard for me, but I think we should do up the fireworks. That's what the fire, the committee would like to do. And I think I've heard several of you say, if the carnival doesn't come, you pay for the fireworks. But, you know, that's out there, $16,000.
So, so go back to my point, John. Again, I think we're in very unique circumstances. Obviously, the canceling the parade was not an easy decision, or one they wanted to make. And of course, couple that with the fact that the carnival had to cancel, which is the primary funder of the, of the fireworks. I don't think, you know, I think we can survive a year without a parade, but I think not having fireworks on the Fourth of July would be frankly a shame. So, that's why I did put John on the agenda to come and ask for this. Again, it's open to discussion. Frankly, I think it's something that, you know, we do collect a food and beverage tax from the citizens of Lebanon and visitors, and I think this is an appropriate application of those funds in these unique circumstances. So, my hope, it's more than 5,000. Again, I propose that we essentially fund what would have been this year's fireworks for them, so that they for them, so that they can make sure they can use essentially last year's proceeds to fund 2020's fireworks, so we can kind of step into the gap and help them this year. Food and beverage obviously is a very flexible fund. We have about $3.5 million cash on hand right now at the moment. We have $450,000 budgeted there, that I don't believe we spent really any of that yet. So I think.
Did you say half a million dollars worth of fireworks?
I'm not saying we have, I'm not saying we have half a million dollars worth of fireworks. I'm saying we have that budgeted. That'd be quite the, that'd be quite the show. But, but to the point though, I think it's flexible, I think it's something that, that we can give some guidance to the, to the Fourth of July Committee, that they can kind of move forward and know that they have some, they can move forward with celebrating our nation's independence under challenging circumstances.
Yeah, I've shared with most of you, it costs about $30,000 to do all the festivities throughout the whole Fourth of July event. So this is a big part of it, is the fireworks. And any help you can do, we've saved up some money, kind of rainy day money, but, yeah, this is definitely going to hurt us this year.
Have you got any money now available?
Yes, we do.
You do?
Yes, we do.
Can I ask how much?
A little, probably enough to do most of, fund most of the whole year, over $20,000. So we do.
But once that's gone, then that's.
Yeah, there again, if we have a bad, we've had a couple really bad weeks, if we have a bad week during the carnival, you know, you don't get any money at all. And we've had three pretty rainy seasons, the last three. When we came into this committee eight, eight years ago, I think, nine, we were hurting. We were, we were, I think we had a couple thousand dollars. We haven't been to you asking for money, we've raised it through great donations through our banks, through people, our community. So it is important to everybody to have this Fourth of July, but, and the fireworks, I think will be, like Matt said, very, very important this year to celebrate our independence. So.
Okay, all right, John.
Yes, sir.
What, what would you need to do a good fireworks show and have $20,000 for a fireworks show?
We.
Based on, based on what the banks are going to give you, other contributors, and still be able to fund next year's activities as if this didn't happen? Now, we're not getting into your big bank.
Yeah, I think if you would fund those, we can go ahead and add to it with the bank money and with some monies of our own. I mean, we're hoping to go ahead and raise money again with the carnival next year, which helps to.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay, but like, like Mayor said.
Yes.
You know, keep that part.
Correct.
For next year.
We don't have enough right now to fund next year, quite frankly, but we will get it with the carnival.
With contributions that you would get this year, what would it take for you to do the fireworks show? 10, 12?
If you want 22 minutes or roughly, it's $16,000.
How much?
$16,000.
You're not having the carnival though, this year.
No, no carnival, no.
And the bank's touchy in half.
Kind of touchy, but it's social distancing and all that.
Sure, okay.
They aren't even going to set up anywhere this year, I think, because all the fairs have canceled and the like, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, so now we're, we're out of everything, and the only thing we got left.
Yes, that's our fundraiser along with our banks.
This fireworks, this Fourth of July, and Lebanon is famous for, for parade and Fourth of July fireworks.
We could cut back on entertainment, things like that. I mean, there's other ways.
And we're not having, we're not having the symphony on the sunset and fireworks down there either, and.
And which frankly, if, if this is the only event, I feel like it should be more than normal.
Should be better.
And the, the person that puts the fireworks up are kind of saving some back for us. We talked about this sometime back when we said, hey, we don't know what this will happen. So I think it'll be limited on what he actually has left over for us also, because other communities are wanting to spruce it up a little bit.
I think everybody kind of wants to do something. And I think having Fourth of July fireworks and having a really nice display and big and we're not doing anything else.
I'd like to make a motion.
There.
I'd like to make a motion that we donate or grant $20,000 to the.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, wow. That's.
Boone County Fourth of July.
July Fourth meeting.
Wow.
We have a motion for $20,000 from.
From Food and Beverage.
From Food and Beverage Fund?
From Food and Beverage, yeah.
We have a motion to grant $20,000 to the Boone County Fourth of July Committee for $20,000. Here's a motion, discussion, for discussion or a second?
Oh, I can second.
Motion and a second for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You will have the billing on there, food and beverage along with the.
We want $20,000 from the banks.
I think those white, those white bangers are like 350 bucks a piece.
So I hear we want a heck of a, heck of a fireworks show, all right, John?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that concludes my new business, any from council? Okay, we'll move on to claims, and we entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we'll pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims, there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Claims are approved, barely, I think. John?
Just a special thanks to, and recognition to the Lebanon Street Department this past weekend for all their employees. It was spring cleanup, and I think in the heat and everything that was going on, they did a fantastic job. There's no, kudos to them.
Absolutely. Thank you, John. Any further discussions, announcements? Okay, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. The next city council meeting will be Monday, June 22 at 7:15 p.m. Thanks for watching.